I'll say, I guess, good morning. This is your vice chair. We are waiting our chair to commence the meeting. The meeting has not started yet. Technical issues connecting to Zoom is the cause for the momentary delay, but we anticipate our chair to be able to log in imminently. And at that point, at that point, he will open up the meeting. So we're just standing still for the moment. I'll say this just for those.
I have two red well files on this particular project. I suppose the rest are here too.
Correct. Just before we we started, just for those that may have logged in a minute ago or so. We're we're standing still because we're waiting for our chair to join who's been plagued by technical challenges logging into Zoom for some reason. But we anticipate that he will be able to do so. We have not yet started the meeting. But we will formally do so when when he logs in imminently.
I did just try to send him or I did just send him my link in case he wants to try my link and I can always change his name. So.
Thanks.
It's another option.
Thank you. Technology is great when it works. There is, I think Napoleon Dynamite sings a song and he says, I love technology, but I'm going to spare everybody from my terrible especially this hour. It's usually a little better, you know, 8:00 PM instead of 8:00 AM. Lee, if Paul cannot join at all, do we even can the three of us alone actually take any action on this at all, even to adjourn?
Oh, yeah, there's a form of the board here. You just you just can't take up this decision. You can't you can't take action on this decision decision because it takes the super majority. But there's a majority of the board here. So the board could can can transact business. You just can't vote this particular decision.
Scrubbing something. Here it is in front of me.
I wonder if Paul could just call in one of our phones and be available verbally that way through a cellphone.
I'll check and we'll text him now. We should have some music playing in the background, or maybe some people could, you know, send their requests.
You could be a disjacky.
Exactly.
Well, I'm going to work on the brewery zoning draft this morning.
Oh, good. Thank you, Jean.
Yeah. When this meeting ends. And then at noon, I have to go over the afternoon. So.
I appreciate it because I want to move that forward. And I think we're probably looking at trying to do it in the special town meeting. I mean, Alex and I were looking at the calendar since things got delayed. And maybe when once Paul's here, I like to settle on a date. I think Alex had floated, I think, a March 29 date for an act and for an extra planning board meeting. It's not working. So I think Alex, what I think, weren't we looking at in the alternative doing Monday, the 28th?
Yeah, Natasha can do that. So if others can.
Yeah, then we could confirm that. I think in the evening is best because we're, you know, I'd say it's a it's a zoning hearing and it's going to be, I think. I can't remember anymore if we're doing any outdoor seating applications that night, Alex. I've lost track.
Yes, we are.
Okay.
Monday, February, February 28?
No, March 28.
Oh, of course. Yeah. Yeah, that's that's good with me.
Okay.
If we do agree on a date, send it around, you know, definite this date, put it on my calendar, then not now.
Everyone hear me? Am I off mute?
Yep.
So that was our illustrious chair, who is having substantial technical problems. But he I gave him the phone number and we're hoping that his phone works. And he's imminently going to dial in. He's been diligently working through, but is unable to overcome the technical barrier this morning. So he's going to make effort to dial in. If that's not successful, then we'll continue without him. Well, he's trying the phone one more time. I think he's just getting some technical assistance from Alexander Graham Bell. I think might have been a Canadian, but I can't recall.
Oh, yes. There's a museum to him in Cape Breton Island.
My mother's from Jean.
Your father's from Cape Breton Island?
No, my father's from Prince Edward Island. My mother is from Cape Breton Island.
Oh, wow. We should we should have to share these stories.
Hello, everyone. I'm on my phone. Sorry about the the problem. After the meeting is over, I shall contact my IT people. I think my problem is with the internet. Or with Microsoft. Because I use the Office email for these meetings. We're having some trouble with Microsoft 365. So I apologize, but I'm here.
Great.
There you.
All right, Paul, you're the chair.
I do. Okay. In that case, are we ready to start?
Oh, we can't hear Adam.
Are you muted, Adam?
He doesn't even look to be muted. So I don't know.
Try now, Adam.
We cannot hear you.
You want to call in? You could. Why not call in?
Is that a problem with the zoom also?
He's having trouble with his having trouble with his audio. We can see him.
He's going to log off, I think, and log back on. You know, we haven't had these difficulties really when you think about it for since COVID began. This is the first meeting where we really had these problems.
Yeah.
So I guess we're lucky. We should look at it that way.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, the phone number hung up on me.
Oh, boy.
Hey. The call and hung up on me. So.
Oh, Adam, Adam, we still can't hear you. Maybe it's an adjustment you have to make on your.
Oh, my goodness.
Are you going to call me or somebody else?
You still waiting for Adam? What's going on?
Yeah, Adam's Adam's having trouble with his audio. Adam, if you want to call me, I can just put you on speakerphone.
I think I think he can't hear us either.
Oh.
You want to send him a message?
Want to call him, Lee?
Yeah.
See if that works and.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Why didn't I think of that?
Paul, are you still there?
Okay. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, well, that's wonderful. Okay. Alex, do we we I mean, rather, do we have Paul? I apologize.
I don't know if Paul is still there.
Okay.
That's the second time that I got hung up on.
It might be okay now because if you were using something related to Adam's link, which sounds like it's possible, Adam's.
I was using a phone number to call into the meeting.
Which I gave him.
I think we might be okay now.
Sounds like we're good now.
Go ahead, start. Let's go.
Okay. Good morning and welcome, I hope. My name is Paul Alfred, and I'm the chair of the planning board. This is a meeting of the Needham Planning Board for Friday, February 11, originally scheduled for 8:00 AM. It is now 8:22 AM. This is an open meeting of the Needham Planning Board and is being conducted remotely, consistent with current state regulations and is being recorded. Public access to this meeting does not ensure that there will be public participation unless required by law. This meeting will not have public comment, except in connection with any hearing that is on the agenda, and there are no hearings on the agenda. First, we'll confirm that a quorum of the meetings of of the members of the planning board are present. When I call your name, please respond that you are present. Adam Block.
Present.
Martin Jacobs.
Present.
Jean Miss Knight.
Present.
And Paul Alfred is here. So the four of us are here. We are discussing the matter of 1688 Central Avenue in Needham. A child daycare center for which Natasha Espada has recused herself. So she will not be joining this meeting. As each agenda item is re oh, I will introduce planning department and other staff members. Lee Newman, our planning director.
Present.
Alexandra Quie, our assistant planning director.
Present.
Alex, are there any other town employees who are present? Since I'm not on Zoom, I can't see.
No, there are not.
Okay, thank you. As each agenda item is reached, I will introduce participants who are here to present or discuss projects and proposals. I do not believe that there will be any. For those participating in the meeting, please also be aware that others may be able to see you and hear you. Anything that you share or state will be a matter of public record. All supporting materials for this meeting, including the agenda, are available on the town's website, www needhamma.gov, unless otherwise noted. I will note that a communication was received by our legal counsel at 10:42 AM, at 10:42 PM last night from the law firm of Hemingway and Barnes, which was resubmitted by their client, Greg Darish. I don't have the time in front of me, but it was after midnight by sending it to planning board members. Needless to say, given the timing, that communication has not yet been placed on the town's website, and it will be in due course. The ground rules for this meeting are designed to allow for an accurate public record. Each of the speakers on our agenda will be introduced. After speakers conclude their remarks, each board member will be asked by name for any comment, questions, or motions. All votes will be by roll call. For each participant, please remember to state your name for the record before speaking. For each person from the public who is recognized to speak, please remember to state your name and address for the record before speaking. That concludes my introductory remarks. The first item on our agenda is 1688 Central Avenue. And I have recused myself as chair, but not as a member of the meeting. So I will now turn this meeting over to our vice chair Anna Block, who is chairing this matter.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. So this continues to be a rather unusual process. As most people know, we've continued to receive written submissions from both the applicant and a butters and the representatives. As Paul said, including as early as midnight or 12:00 AM this morning. In fairness to those that remain interested in this application and to those who may not yet have had an opportunity to review the written submissions that we've received since the close of the hearing, which was in December, we're going to allow anyone to send what we regard, I guess, as final comments. No later than February 18. I assure you, we will not review nor consider any written submission from anyone received after that date, after February 18. After which we will resolve our deliberations and we will resolve our decision. This is not a perfect outcome. And certainly not one that we expected today. And yet, under the circumstances, it does seem to be the most reasonable and fair thing. Lee, what's the next date that we can convene and take this action up?
I would suggest that we schedule it for the week after sometime the week of the 21st.
That's for vacation week. Are you available that week?
I I I will be out of town. Thank you, Paul, for raising that. I'll be out of town. I think I'm back on Friday. Sorry, I'm back on Wednesday, but I could probably I could probably meet in the after 4 o'clock on either Monday or Tuesday, definitely not Wednesday. And I can just do it remote from wherever I am. Hopefully on a beach somewhere with a pina colada or on the 24th or 25th.
Okay, let me just set my calendar.
Well, Monday, Monday is a legal holiday. That's President's Day.
So then it's Tuesday, Thursday, or Friday.
Um, I think Thursday.
And Friday, I would suggest Tuesday if we can.
Tuesday, the 22nd.
Yeah.
Yeah, that I can do that.
Can we do after 4:00? Even if it's at 7:00, it's probably fine for me.
Seven.
I'm available anytime that day.
22nd works for me.
What time should we do it? Do you want to do it at a regular? Do you want to do it at 7:00 PM or do you want to do it at 4:00 PM? Before dinner or after?
I'd rather do it at 7:00 PM. If that works for others. I have an afternoon thing, but I can't.
That's better for me with my family.
Right. Lee, Alex, good point. Okay, so I guess it'll be 7:00. I will I'll find a place somewhere on the beach with internet access.
I thought you were about to be home on Tuesday.
No, no, I'm home on Wednesday. I'm flying back on Wednesday.
Oh. I thought you were home on Tuesday and and leaving on Wednesday.
If you want me to be, I will return Tuesday.
Just in in support of Adam's vacation, which I think people deserve, is Thursday an option? You know, this is a question for for availability, but also for Lee in terms of just getting this done. I don't want to push it out. But I don't want you to have to use your last day of vacation if we can avoid.
Thursday will, I'm sorry, but Thursday will not work for me.
Okay.
So then I guess it's Tuesday.
How about Friday, the 25th? Adam, you're back on Friday, the 25th and available.
I'm back. I think we have a chair vice chair meeting, you and I and Lee at 10:00 AM.
Oh, we could do this before that meeting or after that meeting.
Yeah, I would rather not. No evening meetings on Friday, please.
So are you going to are you going to propose that we meet either at noon or 1:00? I do not. I'm not going to do a Friday morning meeting before the chair vice chair.
Noon or 1:00 works for me on Friday, the 25th.
Marty, how's that for you? I'll make it work.
What 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 time did we set for that on Friday?
I would like to request noon because my son is in a special February vacation camp, and I need to pick him up at 3:00. So I need to leave at 2:30 the meeting to pick him up at 3:00. It's like a weird week. So if we start at noon, that'll give us two and a half hours.
All right, February, right, February 22nd at noon. Okay.
Does that work with our deadlines, Lee? I don't want to push it out too long, but.
Yeah, well, I mean, I think again, I guess that works with our deadlines because we would record the decision the following week.
Okay.
February 20. Didn't we say February 25th at noon?
Oh, excuse me. I misspoke. The 25th, of course.
Okay.
All right. So I think with that, Mr. Chair, I return the gavel back to you, at least in an audio form.
Do we need to take a vote on that, Lee?
Uh, no.
Okay, so we're continuing the hearing.
Well, there's no hearing to continue. We're just.
We're continuing. We're continuing our deliberations.
Correct.
February 25th at noon. And we will consider all all written submissions that are made on or prior to Friday, February 18.
Correct.
Thank you very much. The other items on our agenda are minutes, which there were none in our package. Report from the planning director.
I have two things I'd just like to to settle on today, and that is, Paul, before you got on, we talked about having a special meeting in March. I think Alex floated the date of March 29, which is not going to work for folks. So I'd like to, if it works for you, we'd like to do it on March 28, which I believe is on Monday in the evening. It's starting at 7:00.
What's the setting of that meeting?
Pardon me?
What's the agenda? What's on the agenda for that meeting?
Well, that will be the I'm looking at the
Brewery.
Um, yeah, I think I think it was the brewery and we have, we're going to have some outdoor seating applications.
Say the date again.
The 28th of March.
Which is a Monday.
Yes, in the evening, the usual.
Yes.
It works for me. Yeah.
Works for me.
Marty and Adam, that works for you?
Yep.
I just I just have one other item I want to make you aware of. You know, you you approved, you reviewed the outdoor application for Stoneheart at your last meeting, and we get a draft decision. David Roach noticed that the one of the tables was too close to another table to meet the ADA requirements. So they adjusted their plan to move the table over and add a dimension. And so it's my intent to reference that plan as the approved plan because it's the correct plan. I just want wanted to make you aware of that. Dave was away and couldn't look at the application, you know, before your meeting. And it's just cleaner for me now if we could just reference that document and the decision. So I was going to update it accordingly.
And there's no other change to that plan. Is that correct?
That's correct. Just moving this table away from another table and adding a dimension.
Do we need a certificate or anything from from the applicant testing to that?
No, the applicant has provided us with the revised plan that shows that. So essentially, I think Alex put it on the screen.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I can't zoom in. I don't I don't know how through this avenue, but hopefully you can.
Can you point to the table? That 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 that, yes, it's in that area, that table. Can you point to the table? The one one table moved. That table just moved. That's all.
It used to face this way, and there wasn't the 36 inches of clearance. It used to face this way and there wasn't the 36 inches of clearance right here. So they turned it, so now they have 36 inches of clearance on both sides to be ADA accessible.
Good of Dave to, to spot that. That's.
Yeah, and I just, it's just cleaner to clean it up and I, I don't want to change something without you being aware of that, of the fact that I have changed it, so.
Thank you for letting us know.
Okay.
Lee, can I ask you one question? Can you check to see whether the April 1 deadline to continue Zoom meetings? For municipal bodies is, is still the deadline, April 1, or whether they're going to continue or postpone it for another month?
Okay, I think it still is the deadline, but I, I'll follow up on that. And I had asked, you know, the town. I asked my, asked Katie King whether or not the town was going to, you know, take advantage of the policy that allows for hybrid meetings. Where board members could participate remotely, which requires, I think, under the open meeting law now, a vote of the select board. And I haven't heard back what the decision is on that.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Somebody might reach out to our representatives, Denise Carl, Rebecca Roush. And see if there's any action at the state level on that.
Okay, well, I know that they're considering extending the outdoor dining provisions. And we've been scrambling to get these, all these applications, you know, approved under our regulatory process, but there's, is pending legislation that would further extend that.
But that's a good point because if we don't have any way to allow board member remote participation. Marty, I think what you're getting at is April 5th. You, you can only participate remotely and so we need to keep that in mind because we might have hearings and stuff, so.
Right.
That wasn't really on my radar for some reason, because we have a lot upcoming. So I'll keep that in mind.
Probably Katie King or, you know, Kate Fitzpatrick are following up and know the answer, any.
Yeah, I will, I'll follow up with Katie, I'll follow up with Katie again and see if there's an update on that and let you know.
Thank you.
I have nothing else myself.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, I'll call the role and motion to adjourn. Adam Block.
Aye.
Marty Jacobs.
Aye.
Jean McNeigh.
Aye.
And I vote aye. It's unanimous, four to nothing. We're adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bye.